Can anybody hear me?
What do you want? What do you want?
Oh, I got it.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to call the board this special meeting of the Board of Education at five thirty one P M. Uh, we call the roll.
Sure, Mr. Berger.
Here.
Ms. Conway here, Mr. Corey.
Here.
Mr. Cronin.
Here.
Mr. Pretus here. Mr. Ukuleido.
I'm here.
Calling in. Thank you. Ms. Hona here, Mr. Kisco.
Here.
Mr. Knight.
Here.
Mr. Putnam will be late. Mayor Carbona representative. Ms. Ferguson.
Here.
Ms. Plumazuski excused. Um, Ms. Labby.
Here.
Mr. Pagola. I did see him. Excused, okay. Ms. Schulte.
Here.
Ms. Vans is excused and Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Excellent, uh, no agenda approval is a special meeting, can't change it. Um, so we first up have some policy items. The first one is restorative practices response. Um, I don't know if this is.
Ms. Schulte.
It is Ms. Schulte's.
Gary, yeah, and it's Gary's subcommittee, so if he, if he needs me to speak to it, I can. He's in and out.
Well, I, I. Yeah, I do have a.
Hold on there, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, we need to.
All right, try now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, that's better.
Right. Well, you, you can explain what discussions with, with, what the discussions with Jeff's. Um, were, I mean, I, I didn't, there's no clear definition of, you know, restorative practices. It's just a one lot, exit, just two words, it says restorative practices, so I wanted some, some. Background to that because restorative practices really. It's an entire plan, it's an entire. Plan usually put together, but in this case, I guess it doesn't apply, it's just incorporating some restorative practices. Is that correct?
It, it applies, but well, to just, I just, just to chime in on that to point Gary to what Jess clarified for us. While we do have to adopt this statute, the, the changes, we don't have to modify our discipline policies or our level of expectation that our administrators will continue to enforce board policy, correct?
Correct.
Regardless of, not regardless of what's in there, but it's in addition to, but we don't have to sacrifice any of our current positions for that.
That's my understanding.
Yes.
And the way that we have, and Gary, to your point, the label restorative practices, while someone has. Um, you know, kind of coined that term. I, I've been trained in that program and what I can tell you is I would wager a bet that anyone around this table who has raised children has employed the use of a restorative model. So your child misbehaves, a consequence is handed down. After the consequences served, I'm gonna bet that you brought your child in and sat down and there was a learning experience, why what you did wasn't good? How are you gonna repair any harm that was caused to someone else as a result? Of your words or your actions? And how are we gonna strive to make sure this doesn't happen again? It's just common sense, it's good parenting, it's, that's what we do in our schools.
The key is handing out the consequence first.
Correct, and that's what, and that's what we do.
Right.
Correct.
I think we just wanna make sure that.
Yep.
That doesn't change.
That's exactly how we operate now. The consequences handed down, we have very clear expectations and very clear consequences for infractions, right? And then after the fact, where there's a reentry meeting. It, in this case, it's called a restorative meeting where if there was a victim. Um, the victim and the, the person who caused the harm are typically brought together.
By choice, no one is forced into that situation.
No.
Right, okay. Just wanna clarify that too.
Sometimes parents are invited, so you know, if there's an adult, if there's a staff member, it's, you know. Uh, and again, I almost hesitate to, to wanna say that it's called a restorative meeting, it's, it's just, it's just a meeting, it's, it's just a meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's my chief concern is especially related to bullying, which is defined expressly in the policy, which I assume means it's defined expressly in the statute. Um, that we would be. Uh, in even just encouraging necessarily, uh, a bullied student to sit down in, uh, some sort of meeting with the person who is harassing them. Uh, I mean, I have spoken to people in the community who, I'll give you an example. Um, I, I spoke to a woman a couple of years ago now. Um, she's a grandparent raising her trans granddaughter, regardless of how individuals may feel about the nature of transitioning, et cetera, the, the key point is that this is a child that we're talking about. Uh, who, transitioning or not, was being bullied and harassed by her fellow students uh, for the way that she presented as a, as a transitioning student. Um, and it got so bad and the parent had such difficulty in working with the district to rein in this bullying and harassment that she ultimately elected, a grandparent, mind you, to retire from her job so that she could pull her granddaughter out of school and homeschool her because she was legitimately afraid that her granddaughter was going to harm herself. Um, so my concern is that we're gonna take students like that and put them in a room with a guidance counselor who's gonna encourage them to be nice to the people who have driven them to the point possibly of, of quite literally self harm. Um, I don't want that.
I agree with you.
Um, so I, I'm wondering kind of.
And I, I kinda agree with you on that.
Yeah, is there a limit to like, are we gonna look at this holistically and say, okay, these people, these students have bullied and harassed their fellow students so badly that a restorative meeting just is not gonna serve a purpose?
Correct, it's not a blanket, everybody has to now go to X, Y, Z so we can check a box. It's, at, at least that's not how we do it now, right?
Okay.
And I don't believe that's the intent. Yeah, I don't believe that's the spirit or the intention of, of any of this.
I mean, I can give you, uh, and, and that's a very sad example, I can give you another example that really happened of two children who had been very good friends and then had had a falling out and there was a situation that resulted in, uh, you know, some very cross words exchanging. And then in that situation, you know, are you guys, come on, you've been really good friends. Would you be willing to sit together with a mediator and try to hash out really what went wrong? It's, it's.
Different situation, that would be, that would be warranted, right, if they were friends before, but.
Right.
So we would examine each situation and decide if it makes sense to put these students to try to, okay. That's, that's really, that was my main concern, I guess I gave a long-winded example, but I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna put students in, you know, deeply unpleasant situations if it's going to be unproductive.
Sure, or even more harmful.
Right. John.
I, I, I agree with that, no.
Hold on, John, John's talking.
Go ahead, John, I'm sorry, John, I can't.
Problem here is the complication between our use of this word to describe some of these fairly normal and intelligent things we do versus the field of social sociology that's taken over this term or to practices and put their socio babble into it, so it, it just gets coded to get all this accretes. But, uh, what we're talking about is a, not harmless, but it's certainly not a politically charged version of this practice.
Right, whereas it could have been, and yeah.
Gary, were you?
Yeah, just one thing, because. Well, I, I, I think it states that someone's going to be assigned the, the task or, or the role of maintaining the, this policy in terms of documentation, I, I thought I read that, but.
Not for the restorative, just talking about the restorative one.
I think he's talking about like.
Right.
The safe school climate.
That's the other one.
Well, it, it, yeah, it's, person, whoever it might be, has to be like, like what I brought up and what I, I have mentioned in the past, I mean, some parents. Uh, object to their son, let's say their son or daughter being, who may have been punched or, you know, beat up a little bit or bullied and being forced to a room, and it did happen a couple of times, but it was a couple of years ago, maybe. Um, that whoever is in charge has that understanding that there, there has to be a reasonable, a reasonableness test, I guess. And it's not, I guess it's not required if the parents don't want it, I don't know, but. As, as long as it's not.
Supposed to be a contact at every school and then there is a district contact. So that the one at each school should be working closely with the administration to do exactly what you're, you're suggesting, Gary, so that it is implemented with fidelity and then there's a district wide person that kind of makes sure everybody is getting what they need at the sites.
Right, and I think that, I think the board is considering this at a really good time because we now have the summer where we're gonna be having a lot of face time with our school administrators to review this and many other things, right? So it'll be, it'll be right there, exactly.
And you can express to them our, um, not necessarily concerns, but just our, our affirmation that this, we don't expect any changes and, you know, how board policy is handled and, and all that, so I think that was our main thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, otherwise, I think, I mean, Jess has reviewed this and it's. Something that I guess we should take on and get it approved.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have, yeah.
We, we have to anyway.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So this was more for clarity, get us all on the same page. Right. And it has to be implemented by July first, yeah, so.
July one, yeah.
Good time to do it.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, so then we, uh, I guess I will hear a motion to adopt, uh, this policy, it doesn't have a.
There's no action item.
Oh, oh, I thought the expectation was that these were lumped in discussion and action, but if.
We, we still have time for the full board on June twenty first, right?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Twenty fifth, yeah, so yeah, so it's just moving it, that way we have the discussion tonight and not at the board meeting.
I see, I see.
Yeah.
For, that makes sense to me. Okay, uh, so are all of these discussion items with the exception of the line item transfers? Just while looking at the agenda, uh, well, and, and, uh, possible action personnel? Or are we also looking for action on the budget later?
We can't.
Right, so we.
No action for the budget, I think it was to just reiterate our numbers for the year and, um, lead into the discussion on personnel.
Or adoption at the end of them, okay, so the only action item that you, that you are seeking then and that we have is possible action.
That's true.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure I was reading. Um, okay, so we have next the non-lapsing reserve funds, um, so I think most folks know by now, um, that the law uh, does now enable, um, boards of education to establish their own non-lapsing funds. Um, for the city's attorney that's no doubt listening, that's section ten dash two forty eight A of the general statutes. Um, which, uh, establishes, as we have discussed at the Board of Education, they establish, uh, non-lapsing account for unexpendable funds from the prior fiscal year. Um, provided the deposited amount does not exceed two percent of the total budgeted appropriation for education for such prior fiscal year, um, and that expenditure from such accounts shall be made only for educational purposes and that each such expenditure should be authorized by the local board of education. Um, that's all quoted directly from the enabling statute, uh, we have a policy here in the packet, um, which effectively says the same thing. Um, that the superintendent may request the Board of Education to approve a deposit into a non-lapsing fund, we'll name it the Fund for Educational Expenditures. Um, of some portion of any unexpended funds from the prior fiscal year, as long as it doesn't exceed two percent. Um, it does establish that any expenditure from that fund will be authorized solely by the Board of Education, so anytime the district is looking to spend money, you'd have to come to the Board for both, in accordance with this policy, uh, discussion and debate. Um, only for educational purposes, as the law says, we go a little further than the statute requires, uh, saying generally on one time non-recurring expenditures like capital, extraordinary expenses or emergencies, uh, which may be necessary but not otherwise budgeted for. Uh, it doesn't say that that's the only things, it just, I think we want to emphasize that our preference is always to expend that on stuff that's not gonna be a recurring expense, because we never know if we're gonna have to start loss. Um, the, and that also it's, uh, gonna be accounted for in the normal course and subject to audit. And finally, that the board will review the, the balance of that fund at least on an annual basis. Uh, probably around budget time, because that just makes sense. Um, we'll do sort of an annual review as part of our either, uh, budget and Board of Ed meeting or just a Board of Ed meeting, uh, where we'll go over what's in there, what's been spent, et cetera, et cetera. Um, that.
And then just to add to that, I would imagine that it would also come up anytime you needed to make a transfer or wanted just to spend it.
Right.
Right? And it would be included, it, it'll be, um, in your budget month or report, so we'll have more than.
More than.
Yeah, 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 so that'll be, that'll be good.
Great, um, so that is the synopsis of the policy, and again, I did give some quotes from the enabling statute for anybody with concerns about whether or not this is legal. I'm done, does anyone have anything to add?
I have just one thing. It, can that come back, come back to, back to Board of Ed, I guess if we start to recruit or increase the balance that's in the account, I know the city can't cut, any city, we can't cut the, I can't go prior, go lower than the prior year, but. Um, I, I guess they can keep track of it with us and decide whether or not they want us to transfer funds. Or is that not, is that not possible?
They have no ability to tell us whether we can transfer funds in or out of it. Um, so if you look at the packet, um, you can see on page six and seven, the enabling statute. Um, which, uh, doesn't, um, it doesn't say anything about the city, so it says, quote, "Each such expenditure shall be authorized by the local Board of Education for such town." Um, so not only does the city have no authority to govern the establishment or non-establishment of the fund, uh, it also does not steward it, nor does it have the ability to approve or deny expenditures from it. Is that?
Okay.
Question, Gary?
Yeah.
Jack?
Now, just to piggyback on that, that being said, it was in every budget packet from the city during budget, their budget season just a few weeks ago, so. They're, they're following it, they know they have it, while they can't reduce our budget as a result because of MBR, they can certainly take it into consideration, you know, as the, this time, I mean, that's just the reality of it's a transparent thing they concede.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and all, as, as is everything we do.
Yeah.
Um, we are the most transparent board or department in the city of Torrance.
This is true.
Anyone else?
I would agree.
Okay, so then that, we'll just spend so that discussion item and place that on the board's regular meeting agenda for further consideration and action. Next up is the, uh, school climate plan, is, I assume this is, the existence of this plan is required by statute, is that right?
We currently have a plan, but as of July first, twenty twenty five, every district in the state of Connecticut is required to replace their existing plan with the CAVE plan as written and with no flexibility to make any edits or changes to exactly how the CAVE plan is written.
That's an interesting change in the school sector.
I've never known this to ever happen before, um.
Yeah, you know, I, I have a colleague who's a member of the General Assembly and I'm gonna yell at him about this tomorrow.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm concerned about that.
Okay, so bearing in mind then that the law evidently requires us to adopt this exactly as written. Um, I guess the most, the real purpose of the discussion is to note that and to have any questions answered about it by members of the board if you have them.
So. Is there any difference as to what we currently have?
Um. Significant difference, yeah, I mean, but ours was long to begin with.
Right.
So, uh, so there's not, except that I think there is some incorporation about the restorative practices. Policy, there's some reference to the new restorative practices policy, that other than that, the, the statute is largely the same, we've always had to have a, a safe school climate coordinator in every building, we've always had to have a district one, like those have always been in place with our existing policy.
Yeah, we've always had to keep up bullying laws at all the schools and that kind of thing, I remember, yeah. So it's, it's what we've been practicing.
Yes.
Anyway.
Yes, it won't be a large, heavy lift. Not a big shift for us.
Right, it.
We'll know, we'll know it's a problem when we get there.
Yeah, right.
Right, it requires lots of people to notify lots of other people about things, which is largely in line with what we do, like, you know, the principal having to notify law enforcement if they think bullying constitutes a crime, well, that makes sense.
We've always done that, we actually have a checklist that says that, so, so, so we've always done that anyway.
Excellent, um, and that the require that all school employees annually complete the training described in the statute related to identification, prevention and response to bullying, is that a current requirement? Okay, we already do that, excellent. Um, okay, that's all I had. Did I see Glenn's?
Yeah, no, that was similar question I had.
Okay, uh, so, John.
So what's the purpose of the shipment appendage?
That's just ship, we, just in case you all asked about shipment's model policy, they don't have a model policy because they basically said they're not allowed to write a model, model policy anymore because everybody's required to only adopt CAVE. So we just wanted, you know, in case the question was out there is what's shipment's position, we wanted you to have that information.
Okay.
Good. Anyone else?
Do we have a statute number to hold on with that, is that in there? That says we have to.
It's all in there, yeah.
It was all in there.
There's a bunch of statutory references. And my guess is the primary is gonna be this first one listed, Public Act nineteen dash one sixty six, but they are all listed as well as letters circulated by the Department of Education, a bunch of different sections in the statute. Um, which means sometime in the next decade, the legislature will probably combine them all into one statute, but until then, you have to jump around.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they're not even all new.
No.
No, it just kind of. Point in all different directions.
Anybody else? Okay, um, so we will tag that to, onto the board's regular monthly agenda as well. Uh, we now have line item transfers that, uh, you are seeking. I don't see them in the packet.
So this is timely, um. Because of our fiscal responsibility and oversight. We are recommending, uh, with the balance that we foresee to be transferred to some other line items. Um, one being everybody's getting a copy of it, and what you'll see in front of you is the line item.
Read each one.
Yes, I'll read each one. Um, for each line item, um, you know, where it's coming from on the left. And then the next column is where we would like to place it, the description and the full amount. Um, and if you go to the bottom line, um, right off the get-go, just because we were just talking about the non-lapsing reserve. We do have, um, we are forecasting that we will have two percent of our budget from last year to be putting into a non-lapsing, um. Reserve fund. So that request is for one point five seven four, four, five, four million dollars. To go into, uh, the non-lapsing reserve fund.
But that's not a request, it's just a transfer. The request to us, right? But not a request to anyone else.
Yeah, so all these line items are requests to the board.
Right.
Yes. Um, so jumping up, up to the top. We are looking to transfer some funds, um, from the benefits line item where there was some funds, um, available. Into, um, the supply line item. And this would go to support the IM math program that everybody is in love with, and we can't wait to get rolling out. Um, and some, uh, supplies that are needed as well for that. The next, and that amount would be nine hundred thousand dollars. The next line item, again, coming from the benefits, would be going into, um, our license renewals. Um, I have spoken with the auditors and we are allowed to, um, purchase licenses for this year and for following years, as long as there's a discount. Um, with that purchase, so, uh, we are looking into that and we have found some nice, um. Packages that we can look into. That amount would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. And the final, uh, request would be again, coming from, uh, the benefits would be going into, uh, the district maintenance account. Uh, for many items that Dean has been hoping to do, um, and that amount is six hundred thousand. So the total line item budget transfers, um, are equivalent to three point two million dollars. And that includes the non-lapsing approximate one point five million.
No, uh. So I guess I have a few questions before I turn it over to the rest of the group. So this, this maintenance line item, the six hundred thousand, uh, I mean, this is for this current fiscal year, so will we have? Things that we can encumber six hundred thousand dollars for before the close of the fiscal year?
Yes, he has a very, um, specific budget that he has set out, he's been hoping to do, that will be helping us for this fiscal year. And of course, obviously benefits.
And they monitor the budget every month?
No, of course, and, and I'm just, I guess, um, I just have a series here, so sorry. Um, so. Uh, bearing in mind then that, I guess, I mean, we didn't specify this as an action item, although our agenda does, also doesn't specify them as discussion items, but. Assuming that the discussion we had a few minutes ago about placing all of these on the Board of Education's regular meeting agenda at the end of the month. Um. The board has to approve these, so the board won't approve the actual expenditure of the funds until the end of the month, so you guys would have to.
I don't think we have to, I don't think we have to.
No, it's, it's an informational line item transfer. There's technically, it doesn't need board approval for a line item transfer. The board has to be informed, as it should. Just from basic protocols and, and preference, we would never just transfer money like that without the board's knowledge. So this is an informational item for the board, obviously. You know, with board support, uh, that makes it a lot easier as opposed to the board. Transgression, but, uh, per, per statute, the line item transfers can be done internally with the board's just knowledge of them.
Okay, I don't know, I don't mean to love with that, but that's a further, that's a later discussion.
Um. You could argue with your friend of the.
Yeah, um, okay.
That conversation tomorrow.
Right, um, my last question is, what is the nature of substantial savings? So I, I know a significant amount of the transfer to the non-lapsing reserve is from savings this year for healthcare that would be carried forward. Via that fund. For, uh, additional expenses later, but is that also where this one point five million? Per maintenance and supplies is coming.
Correct.
Okay, so the, the, the vast majority of this significant savings is, uh, because of the savings that we achieve. With our twenty-one month look ahead plan for health insurance. Okay.
Yes.
That's what I have. Mr. Berger, I say.
I'm just curious about the six hundred thousand dollars, getting all that encumbered in the next month? None of that has to be. Buying, well, we're buying off state contract, there's no bids or quotations that need to go along with that? In order to, for us to approve that expenditure?
So. Yep, Donna can speak to it, but I, Dean does have his list and his working list that he shared with the facility subcommittee, so I know even tomorrow evening, I'm sure he'll. Share a lot more from that list, but a lot of the items that have already been, you know, I know one of them, for example, is the partitions at the new intermediate school.
Yeah.
That's been a hotbed topic. So I think, you know, things of that nature, he's been working very hard to go out and to do all of that. That's why the, the money is needed to, to get this up and done, so he can work on that this summer.
Agreed, I'm not trying to be a Debbie. But we still need to follow.
That's correct.
Over a certain amount.
One hundred percent.
Yeah.
We're not super.
Just like.
We'd get hit with an audit.
Okay. Even if it's on state contract, you know, I just, I personally. Don't go out and get one number. If there's two people on the state contract, let's get two or three to keep.
Three, at least three, yeah, we'll get three quotes.
It's a lot of work to do in the last month.
I think there's been preparation in place and anticipation for this, so I think the, the homework's been done ahead of time, so that'll be.
I, I, I just hope so, because you know we're on the radar and they, they're. Looking for excuses.
Absolutely, it'll all be audit proof.
Mr. President.
I, I'm gonna assume we're gonna see what this is, the intent of the six hundred is tomorrow night at our. Facilities.
I don't know, it's first time here, just as you, so.
Yeah, just as it's.
He'll be able to speak to it, I'm sure, at, you know, tomorrow's meeting, just as an update.
Oh, sorry. Okay, um, first, I'm so happy that we're able to bring, um, the new program in. I know it's a lot of money, but it's really worth it. Um. I don't, can somebody tell me a little bit about what the licenses and renewals are? I just, I'm not familiar with what that would be used for.
Sure, so that's just like the Star platform or Power School. We do have to pay for recurring license fee. And if you, you know, purchase, uh, multiple years, you usually get a discount, you know, about ten percent or fifteen percent. Um, so that was. Considered in this, um, when this budget was put together.
Okay.
Rachel has some licenses that she can pre-purchase as well, um, for a discount, so there's.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I just wasn't sure what it was. And, and, um. I'm also, I mean, I know everybody has questions about the maintenance line, but I'm happy to see that some things will be taken care of because.
Yeah, the buildings really need it.
I, I do just, and I, I don't necessarily phrase this as a question, but I would just say. With the maintenance line, it has come up before in disputes over Board of Ed surpluses with the city. Um. About spending, uh, on things that are capital expenses out of maintenance. Now, there's some wiggle room on what isn't, is not a capital expense, and I don't wanna do the mayor's work for her, but I would just caution. Uh, that that is something that draws scrutiny. Um, and that put us in a pickle, so I just hope that we are. Doing our homework, and the facilities committee is doing its homework, uh, to make sure that all of this is permissible operating expenditure.
Donna is all over the differences in what.
We'd fight over that van.
Yes.
To fight over and for everybody to finally.
Yeah.
Accept that we were right. So I just don't wanna have to go.
I just got it, right. Yeah.
I'm with you, and I assume that's. To your point, Dean's gonna come tomorrow night with a.
I won't be there at the meeting, so I would imagine.
With a list that kinda gives us an idea what we're doing, just even if the board sees it. Ways in as well.
Hopefully the bathrooms at the middle.
It's all operation.
They are, they are. Those doors.
Yeah. Lot of many other things. Uh, does anyone else have any judge?
Uh, and along the lines of the things that the city is concerned about, budget transfers within our own budget is one of them. Now, you just said that you can move many, money anywhere you want. Okay, here's what Tom Mooney said in his column in the, in the.
Talking about the deficit article, that's because they were in the deficit.
And I'm not, uh, deficit with two weeks to go. Yeah, except that, he said boards of education are authorized by section ten two two two. To make budget transfers over the course of the year, responsibility reserved for the Board of Education. Except in limited circumstances. Then he goes on to talk about emergencies on the board unable to meet. So you are of the opinion that you can move the money around any way you want without, and we've talked about budget transfers in the Budget Committee meetings.
So statutorily, the superintendent can make line item transfers. I would never make a line item transfer without notifying the Board of Education, especially at this board or any board I would work with or for. Um, and for the community purpose, it just would not be prudent, would not be fiscally sound, would not be smart. I think that this bringing it to the board's attention. And making the board aware of what we're, we're doing, and in terms of getting things moving. I believe one hundred percent that we are allowed to do that.
Okay. And we can also, um, we can certainly place these. On the monthly meetings agenda for further consideration of the board. Um, my, I guess in relation to that, uh, if it is that the board's pleasure to do that, um. Is it possible? To, uh, encumber these expenses and not actually expend the funds until the Board of Education meeting? Or will that cause a real financial panic in your office?
It does, it is under a tight timeline to liquidate. Uh, so we want to definitely be liquidated by the end of July, you know, encumbered by June and have items in our hands. I mean, the ideal goal is to have them in our hands by June thirtieth, but we know, you know, the reality of that.
Are you asking that because? You wanna have, you wanna put more?
Well, I'm, I'm preparing for the next question I have for the board broadly, which is to, again, to the point of Mr. Disco, but if it is the board's pleasure to. Uh, want to vote on this and put it to a vote at the monthly meeting, that it sounds like would be quite stressful for our. Our folks in central office, uh, but I do wanna put that question to the board and not make that decision myself. Um, so if enough folks would like us to do that, uh, we certainly can place it on the board.
Could I just ask what we did last year? Was anybody now?
There was no line.
No transfers, okay.
But I think to your point, I mean, if. I mean, while they would put a crunch, if there is. If there is no, and, unless I'm mishearing the group, I haven't heard anyone in strong opposition to transferring line items. I think if we were to move in the vein of having, in theory, the board's support. And waiting till the twenty-sixth, we can do everything on the back end, however. On the twenty, sorry, twenty-fifth, on the twenty-sixth, that number has, those numbers have to come out.
Right.
I mean, and that's what's gonna draw scrutiny from the city.
Literally four days.
So I think, so I think if, if in theory. And, and I would say, because this is a special meeting and it is public and it is recorded, I would. Strongly encourage every board member to voice their opinion to say that they are in support of this, so that we can move forward. And that the city does not think we're waiting until June twenty-sixth. I think that's just prudent and sound. In terms of, you're not making a vote, you're just giving your opinion in terms of supporting the four line item transfer forward this evening.
Well, and that's sort of what I'm asking is, you know, where, where we're sitting, because I think, so like, personally, I'm fine with transferring these funds. Uh, you know, the release of them, I, I think all makes sense. Uh, pending the sort of detailed overview of the maintenance project.
Yeah.
Um, so if these specific line item transfers that have been discussed in our public documents. Are broadly speaking, um, not objectionable to the board. We could then, at our leisure over the next year, raise this matter for consideration, uh, as a policy matter. If the board would like to head in a direction where it would like to vote to approve line item transfers. Um, and that would be, you know, I'm not, I'm not staking out a position on that, but, uh, because it's been raised as a concern. I think that could be the way forward here is. You know, if there's objection, then we will further consider this, but if there is not a voiced objection to these specific transfers. Um. The superintendent reasonably believes that he has the statutory a, authority to move them, and I believe him. Um, having not read the statute, so I guess, uh, as the primary. Razor of this issue, I would turn it to John to answer.
I would object to doing it tonight. I will not object to it being done by board fault and ignored.
Okay.
And that's good practice so that we can get started and do what we said, and if you're not objecting and he's not objecting.
Come on with, as you say, policy changes that specify what Bill and John.
Have we made line item transfers in, in the past?
We have, and sometimes the board's voted, as I recall, and sometimes it is not, but Alan's been on the board longer than anybody, so.
We have at a regular budget meetings. As we go along, so instead of waiting until the, the end, so if we can make that a practice going forward.
Well, you have to wait till the end because we don't know how much money we're gonna have.
Well, these are specifically transfer surplus, but. Yeah.
Right, but, right, but it was, my understanding was it had to be in the same category. So you couldn't go from benefits to supplies, but you could go from benefits to another line item within that.
Subaccount over the.
Subaccount, right. But. Reading.
I have a suggestion.
Reading Mooney's. It seems like it can be, because it's our budget, it could be within. Anywhere in the budget.
So I think.
I would.
To simplify, I, I hear the concerns, I hear Mr. Kisco's concern. If the board wants to make the four line item transfers official on June twenty-fifth, as long as we hear everyone's opinion, you thankfully stated it. Mr. Kisco has stated, if everyone is in theory. We can do everything we need to do. In theory, before spending and writing the check. Because come June twenty-sixth, Donna's gonna hit transfer, transfer, transfer. Then we know we could do the orders and things that we need to get done.
Uh, yeah, Gary, then Kristen.
Uh, I'm fine with it tonight, knowing what the, these items are, but I would, so there's clarity in all this. Get Moni to weigh in. Get the final answer, so we know what it is if we're gonna make policy later. Let's know what the real answer is. It may be, I, I have no idea what it is, as to whether or not, or what we can and cannot do, or if the super. Um, has the right to do it, so let's get his clarity, and I'm okay tonight, but whatever you wanna do, we can do it, and. Then we get clarity moving forward.
Excellent, Kristen.
Um, you know, this is probably gonna piss some people off, but, um. Yeah. This, shut Gary, um, this is something that I said in the, um, in our retreat. Um, you know, this, this city, this town, and all of its residents have waited a really long time to have. Um, a central office team that we can trust. A very long time, and as residents and parents of students in this district. We've been screwed, and I'm, I'm not afraid to say that publicly because we have. Yeah. Um, I'm confident in the, the team we have in place. Um, and actually, just the other night, I was talking about Donna, and I said if her salary is a million dollars, she'd still be worth it. Because of all the hard work and the grants and everything that she does for, for the, the district. Um. I really think that we need to. Sorry, this is gonna aggravate people. We need to stop nitpicking and everything. Entrust our team. Very well said. Sorry.
I'm agreeing with you, but, but I think. I'm agreeing, Kristen. I think though.
Thank you, Gary.
To protect, to, we agree more than we thought we would, but to protect the superintendent and Donna, and I don't mean. But just from anybody, including the city, we should know exactly. It's legal and not legal, so it doesn't come back to bite anybody later. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
With that article, I, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, and nobody is.
Yeah, I, I totally agree, Gary, too.
So it seems like.
That's all.
The superintendent has no objection, and it sounds like it's all workable if we. Uh, place these on the agenda for the board's regular monthly meeting. Uh, in that intervening time, we can get that opinion that Gary's seeking, as long as there's still money in the legal budget, the city's gonna put that.
I have a, a.
Uh, message with Jessica now, so.
Right, so we'll, we'll get the, the definitive answer. In the meantime, we'll place it on the board's agenda. We will ask the board to take a vote. Uh, hopefully in the affirmative, but, you know, uh, can't say for sure. Um, and then.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, just one more thing, then we will place this matter before the policy committee for its consideration, where. Two, it sounds like very differing opinions on the matter can be thoroughly debated, and we'll see what the committees, uh, and.
Right.
Is, uh, soon.
Um. What I was gonna ask, it was along the lines of what you were, uh, summarizing. If I think of it, I'll, it was right before the policy committee, um.
When he said, hopefully, the affirmative.
Oh, right, so the, thank you. So the alternative, I wanted, that was good. Could the alternative, my understanding is we give it back to the city.
Yeah, which is not desirable.
The alternative is it goes back. Just so everybody knows.
Right, but but everyone, everyone can cast their vote as they wish, I would certainly be voting in the affirmative to transfer these, to approve these transfers at the time of the vote.
To give any money back.
I think we all agree at the table that nobody is intending to not spend the money for the betterment of the district and the children, I think just with the. The two to fifty pieces of information on the table. We want to protect the superintendent, Donna, and the ten board members, I mean, ultimately, and at the end of the day, if something. Crazy happened, the ten board members are responsible for.
Yeah. We have a three point two million dollar.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
We have a plan and we will follow it, um, and that.
So we will.
Concludes this.
We will continue in our zest.
Perfect, you can proceed and hold off on.
We will do all the necessary light work, assuming that the board will vote in the affirmative, and if it doesn't, then you won't have to do any more work because you'll just end up transferring.
Send a check back.
We do. Oh, it exists, what does it say, Ellen?
Board of Education may transfer any unexpe- unexpended. Or uncontracted for portion of any appro- appropriation for the school purposes to any other item of such itemized estimate. But expenditures shall not exceed the appropriation made by the fiscal authority combined with such money. As may be received from the other sources of school purposes.
The Board of Education may, which may be the legal gray area.
We have this discussion.
Right.
The board directs the administration to develop regulations to assure appropriation and blended the policy about. The superintendent will present line item transfers on the board's consent agenda. On a regular board meeting, the business manager will recommend to the board. Where the funds could be transferred from and to in case of an emergency transfer, just like he said. The superintendent should report those transfers to the Board of Education at its next regularly scheduled meeting.
So in fact, it must be presented as part of the board's consent agenda at the board's regular meeting, so we are right to move it along to that date, and we will do so. Thank you, Ellen, for reminding us of a policy that probably hasn't been changed in quite some time. Yeah, so a twenty four year old policy that I forgot existed, and that's why we're lucky.
Add that to your agenda. Policy thirty forty, Gary.
Yeah, I'll check the minutes. We're gonna change it anyway.
But Ellen can say that is good, because then we can make sure to follow our own process appropriately. Right, uh, so next we have budget twenty five, twenty six.
Announce what, you know, formalize what we are aware of. That we received, that we can spend on the twenty five, twenty six. Fiscal year, um, what those numbers are, do you have that, Donna, by any chance, I'm sorry?
Seventy eight million.
You're, they've been the same number, I should know.
Eight, seven, twenty two, sixty ninety eight.
That's it.
Yes. Yes, correct. Uh, we should, it's been the same number for so long, but, um, it was more of a lead in.
Two is what we wanted, seventy eight, yeah.
Yeah.
So you said.
Um, just to have that quick um overview to lead into our, the discussions that we need to have on personnel. Um, because as we know, that money doesn't cover our contractual obligations at this point, so we'll have some conversations. Going forward in our executive session, Ellen, you had a question, I think.
I know we need to talk about this in budget, um. And I think we need to do that over the summer.
Next year, next fiscal year, yeah, not tomorrow.
Not tomorrow, yes.
So.
Know that we got zero.
Right, we know we got zero, I I know that the team will. Present over the course of the next month either at budget and or at the Board of Education meeting, obviously there for its vote. Uh, what that budget looks like, and it sounds like you, that's pending some discussions in executive session. So there will not, there's no budget presentation tonight, but we just wanted to raise that as a topic. Um, because it's gonna be, well, could be a little messy. Um, does anyone have anything to add about the budget, I'm not even gonna go off today because I, uh. I don't wanna have a hard.
Include that to zero per capital improvement.
Oh, yes, and that's the.
Right.
That is the most egregious part, because I don't know what I'm. Now supposed to do about things like leaking roots and crumbling masonry. Uh, I for one will hold the mayor personally responsible if a piece of crumbling masonry falls off. Forth school and hits somebody in the head. Um, and I think the entire community should, if something dangerous, unsafe, injurious, et cetera, happens. Because of the lack of our capital improvements, even something as simple as curbing, when somebody breaks their leg. Because we haven't been able to replace our curbing in years and years. Um, I will hold Mayor El- Mayor Eleanor Carbone personally responsible for the injury to that person. Uh, even if the courts won't, I certainly hope the community will morally. That's, I'm not gonna say.
Can I just elaborate a little bit more now, excuse me, John? I know they. And during their meetings, they were saying that it's not sustainable to have a zero percent increase. Uh, year over year, um. Just want people to know that this is our second consecutive year, and it looks like there's gonna be a third consecutive year. And three years ago, our increase was so minute, it should essentially be zero. So the district has been operating on three years of flat budgets. Um, and very, almost zero dollars for capital improvements as well, so. You know, we proceed, know where these are, we've been dealing with it for a long time, and the city departments are crying about it, maybe doing it for one year. Um, you know, now everybody's gonna feel the pain.
Yeah.
Yeah, as I recall, the one vote in the Board of Finance against the budget was because, uh, as that member stated. They're upset that police and fire are getting zero, and while I love our police and firemen, uh, you know, I wonder where the upset is that. That our students are getting a zero dollar increase for the consecutive year. Uh, there's only been one increase that I can recall in my time on the board that's been substantial, and it was, I think, four or five years ago now. We got one increase of about one point one million, uh, because the city was flush with COVID cap.
COVID money, it was, yeah.
Um, and that's the only substantial increase I can recall in the last eight years, and it still didn't cover the needs. Mr. Brown. It was still way less than inflation, oh, sorry.
The the city implied because of the phased in approach to property taxes and property valuations that this was a two year. Zero, that all departments have to do it for two, so as we're talking about this in the coming months. This is not just a zero this year, this is a zero next year, now maybe that will hold not to be true with statutes and things, but. That was the implication in that meeting for everybody to consider.
And that's why it's great news that there will be, no matter who it is, a new mayor come December. Um, so maybe they'll be able to be a a little bit more creative and or fiscally responsible at the city side. Um, so that they can appropriately budget for education.
Well said.
That being said, does anyone have anything else to add on this matter? If not, we have a possible executive, you you put executive sessions. Which I guess means we could do multiple back to back, it's, it feels a little dodgy.
Is that just, is that a typo?
Okay, um, who are you seeking to be invited? Okay, so everybody around the table with the exception of. I will hear motion to exec- in to enter executive session, inviting in those aforementioned individuals.
Ask a question first, but can we go into executive session to just talk about what are essentially budget matters? Rather than individual people?
It's personnel related.
But I looked at the.
And last year, we did the same thing, John, we did the exact same thing.
Uh, I mean, as long as you're gonna tell me we can do it, I'll vote against it, but we'll do it. Uh, I I've been union president too, I was union president too, want to just buy into this. Uh, if we're gonna be talking.
Can you not say nasty things, though, if you wanna comment, that's fine, don't be derogatory.
We're going to be talking about people who will be identifiable because there are so few of them. We need to have given them the chance to be here, we won't be doing that. Okay, okay.
Is this personnel matters? Or specific personnel?
Impacts personnel, not specific people, else they would have been invited, Mr. Kisco's back.
So it's personnel matters?
If you prefer to phrase it that way.
I I would, I would say, uh, bear in mind that we obviously can't expect the superintendent to give us the detail. Uh, I would say the best move here would be to enter executive session, and if it comes to be. That the board as a body reasonably believes that the matter being presented by the superintendent should be discussed in open session. Then we will exit the executive session at our leisure, uh, and have that discussion at that time. Um, but if our administration team is telling us that this is an executive session item to protect. Uh, you know, certain individuals, groups of individuals and their rights, um, I believe them until I know what the fine details are. Um, and with that, I would hear motion to enter executive session, inviting any foreign people.
Someone.
Their second.
Second.
Okay, uh, made by Mr. Berger, seconded by Ms. Pennway, uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Okay, uh, so that's eight to two, we are in executive session at six twenty two.
Okay, but is.
Okay, but is.
So, okay, the board is in open session at six thirty-nine P M. We have, uh, the last agenda item, possible action regarding personnel. Um, so I will, in accordance with that, hear a motion to eliminate the following positions for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. The two interventionists, three alternative education teachers, one B C B A, one grant manager, one custodial position. Four para educator positions, uh, and one parent liaison. Um, just before someone makes the motion, I want to clarify, because the way I've read that could be confusing. This is not laying anybody off. We are eliminating positions. We are not hearing a motion to issue any pink slips or lay off any people. With that said, I will hear the motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay, made by Mr. Chrisco and segmented by Mr. Knight. Um, I will invite, uh, discussion on this again, just to emphasize, um. These are positions, um, the, some of them are vacant and not to be filled. Uh, others are presently filled, but the administration will ensure, uh, that the employees currently occupying them. Are health harmless, uh, via transfer in accordance with their collective bargaining agreements and the superintendent's statutory authority. Is there additional discussion from members of the board on the question before us? Uh, I just wanna throw out there, uh, in relation to the, the grant manager, I know there is some concern. Um, because that, that role really is essential, and until very recently, Ms. Levy occupied it full-time. Uh, without the addition of her current extra responsibility, um, you know, a lot of the grant work. My understanding is done kind of in the spring when you have to start submitting the grant proposals. So by that time of the year, um, if there, fingers crossed, if there are some dollars that can be transferred. One thing that may be helpful is there, there are people who do grant work on a contract basis. And while it's more expensive hour for hour versus having somebody's salary, um, you know. At that time, I'd certainly think the board would at least consider if there's a need for that, and there's a line item that funds can be transferred from. I would rather pay somebody for ten hours of work a week for a couple of weeks to make sure that we are in compliance, getting things done on time. Um, than have everyone at central office scramble to, to do it in addition to their other jobs. Um, so it's not really desirable. Um, contractors are expensive, but it's like, I'll tell them to throw out there. Anyone else have anything to add? Okay, if not, uh, I'll put it to a vote. All those, uh, begrudgingly in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose. Okay, so that, that motion is carried. Those positions are eliminated.
For the record, I abstained. I, I just, I just can't. And I'm torn.
Uh, totally understandable. This is not desirable. Uh, Ellen will ensure that your vote reflects as an abstention.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with that, I have to hear a motion to adjourn.